Hi, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Town Council on September 8, 2020. This meeting is being televised through Watertown Cable Access. The public may join virtually. There's a link on the town's website if you click on the agenda. And there's also a phone number available. And public comment may also be made through the email v picchirelli, p i c c i r i l l i at watertownmas.gov. First item is roll call. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
You're muted.
Yeah. Councilor Donato?
Here.
Councilor Felton?
Present.
Councilor Gannon?
Present.
Councilor Canelis?
Present.
Councilor Palumbo?
Present.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Present.
Councilor Woodland?
Present.
Councilor Bays?
Present.
President Sedaris.
Present, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard at this time?
Russell Rico.
Yeah, Russell Rico. We've allowed you to talk. Please unmute yourself. Go ahead, Russ. Please unmute, Russ.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that delay. Mr. President, distinguished councilors, in regards to the proposed noise ordinance, to avoid hardship, contractors should be given five years to replace or modify equipment that does not meet the new ordinance guidelines. It is only fair. As far as I'm concerned, this request is reasonable. And there's no reason why any reasonable person should object to this. And remember, I am not a contractor. I have no one in my family that are contractors. But these are hardworking people. And we should not do anything that is harmful to them because there's enough people not working here in Massachusetts without making it hard on another group of hardworking people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? This is public forum for the public to join. Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the...
Councilor Picciarelli has an email that came in.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received an email from Mayor Russo. She asked me to read the first public forum. It says, "I am shocked that the officials that made the decision to have voting at 100 Warren Street did not apologize to the citizens for making a mistake for their first decision. Officials continue to put our community in harm's way. Police should be at the site of the Hosmer demolition site at East Street, Mount Auburn, and other streets, Concord Avenue. I noticed the corner of Spring and Common, three police officers supervising a long drawn-out lighting and crossing. Yet three gates open near Hosmer, small signs posted, asbestos could cause cancer to your lungs, huge hosing happening, severe storms with strong winds that week, and at least five citizens walking by with no mask while demolition was happening. An ESL grandparent on the field did not understand English, a pregnant woman with a toddler lived abutting, Hosmer totally unaware of the dangers, and they thanked me. I'm not looking for recognition, I'm looking for safety. This is where at least two police officers should be supervising and making sure gates are closed. Please take this seriously. A small posting is not enough when one small particle can kill a person 50 years later. I find this disgraceful. I watched a meeting today regarding the June 24 Hosmer, residents abutting the Hosmer, not being aware of the one-way street and drop-off busing disturbing the abutting neighbors, not being notified. Stop this not including them. Transparency reading that citizens are disgusted with our officials for not being transparent. Could you please answer this evening how citizens go about changing the charter ruling and getting either a vote of no confidence of our town officials or changing the charter rulings? Is it with a petition with signatures to change to a mayor or of Watertown? In the past article, Newsman Articles, Charlie B. suggested some ways and answer of how to change the current charter ruling on changing town manager officials that are not voted in. Transparency would be helpful for the residents of Watertown. They should not have to continue to ask our officials, who should be able to answer their concerns this evening. I would like an answer. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is President's Report. And I have, first of all, our resolution on fiscal year 2022 budget process. And it reads, "Whereas Article 5 of the Watertown Home Rule Charter sets out a process for the development and adoption of the annual operating budget and capital improvement program. And whereas, the Town Council wishes to establish a timeline consistent with the charter by which it will provide policy guidance to the town manager on the development of the budget and capital improvement program. And whereas, such a timeline will also give town residents notice of their opportunity to offer input on these important financial matters. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the city known as the Town of Watertown establishes the following timeline for the development of the fiscal year 2022 operating budget and capital improvement program. The fiscal year 22 preliminary budget overview will be presented to the Town Council by October 13, 2020. The Town Council will adopt its fiscal year 2022 budget policy guidelines by November 4, 2020. The proposed fiscal year 2022 to 26 capital improvement program will be presented to the Town Council by January 26, 2021. The Town Council will adopt its conceptual recommendations on the fiscal year 2022 to 2026 capital improvement program by March 9, 2021, subject to the availability of funds." Can I get a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President, motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wonder if you had any comments, given COVID and the way we're communicating on the public participation piece and the last few years discussions about public wanting more input. I didn't know if that was just going to be left up to the committee to decide how and how many meetings will be run, or any thoughts on that?
Well, at this point, that's going to be up to the committee to decide the public participation. We're still looking at options of trying to get people in a room, but it's still very limited at that point, at this point. So we may have more to say about that in the next couple of weeks. But again, it's the committee chair is going to have to take the lead on this, which would be Council Picciarelli. Any other comments on the resolution? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, we'll go back to the minutes in a moment. The other item I have on the President's Report is that I want to take this opportunity, and I spoke to the manager, and he's also going to say something under communications from the town manager. I want to take this opportunity to thank, first of all, John Flynn and his staff in the clerk's office for the efforts that they put in for the election that we had last Tuesday. A lot of work was done, and I know we have a lot more to do for the next election, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I also want a special thanks to others, including Mr. Tom Tracy, Steve McGoon, and then they put together some teams, which included Councilor Picciarelli, who did a fantastic job of keeping these things moving. And I, and I believe the town appreciates all of their efforts. And the manager will have a little more to say about that shortly. Let's go back to the minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of August, July 14?
Mr. President, make a motion that we adopt the minutes of July 14 as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is motions, orders, presentations of petitions and proclamations in similar matters and papers. And this is just confirmation of the proclamation regarding the retirement of Patricia Farrell from the Watertown Free Public Library. And I'll take an opportunity to read this. "Whereas Patricia Pat Farhar Farrell has always loved books and being around them. And as a teen, she made the former East Branch her second home. Pat began her library career at the Watertown Free Public Library as a page shelving books at the age of 14. And whereas, Pat worked 10 hours a week at the library, earning the minimum wage of $1.15. And whereas, Pat began her full-time employment in the circulation department at the main library after graduating from Watertown High School on April 7, 1964. And whereas, after spending a few years in the technical services department, processing new library material, she returned to the circulation department. And whereas, when Pat was married, she brought her family to the West Branch to enjoy storytime and continued working part-time, returning to a full-time position when her children were grown. And whereas, Pat has seen many things during her 56-year career, including the attempt to salvage books when the pipes burst, and has remained a constant presence at the library for the Watertown community. And whereas, as one library user stated, Pat has been a friendly and familiar face at the front desk and in the community. And that she, that she had been, has been an invaluable wealth of knowledge and experience which benefits both the library and its patrons. And whereas, a grateful community wishes her well in next career and expects to see her roaming the stacks of the library. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the city known as the Town of Watertown extends its congratulations to Pat Farrell on her retirement from the Watertown Free Public Library. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Watertown to be affixed on this first day of September, 2020. Mark Sedaris." Can I get a motion on the proclamation?
Mr. President, make a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions, comments? I just want to thank, Pat lives on my street, and she's a neighbor, and I want to thank her for 56 years of serving this community and serving it well. And I hope that she enjoys her retirement as much as she enjoyed working for the town. Thank you, Pat. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. And 7A is a public hearing and vote? Oh yeah, sorry. Got to do a roll call, forgot about that. Roll call, please. I got too busy talking. Thank you.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Happy to vote yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Now back to the agenda. 7A is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from Comcast Cable, Inc. to install a 1x3-inch conduit in New Vault, east of Utility Pole 47, 3 feet, capturing existing conduit, placing new conduit from New Vault and sidewalk to building 365, 375 Pleasant Street. Also to install a 1x3-inch conduit from Utility Pole 45 to private property located at 345 Pleasant Street. Each conduit from Vault and up will be 5 feet in length for a total footage of 10 feet to the property line. Who's here from Comcast?
Manuel Fattado is currently here from representing Comcast.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak on this?
Sure, these are two locations where we need to utilize underground to feed new residential complexes that are being built there. We've worked with the DPW to make sure that these conduits are not affecting anything else in the area. We've been back and forth on locations just due to the location of where electrical was going. That's the reason for this long grant allocation request.
Okay, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I will now open it up to the general public for questions or comments. Seeing none, can I get a motion from the council to put this on the floor?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the petition for the underground conduit for Comcast at, on Arsenal Street.
Pleasant Street.
All right, on Pleasant Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7B, which is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from Crown Castle Communications to place one 4-inch PVC communication conduit from Utility Pole Number 12, approximately 145 feet plus or minus northeasterly to an existing private property manhole at 486 Arsenal Street. 100 feet plus or minus of the conduit to be constructed within the public right-of-way. Who would be speaking on this or presenting?
It's Bill Conway from Axis Engineering, representing Crown Castle.
Welcome, please describe your petition.
Yes, we're looking to place one 4-inch communication conduit from Utility Pole 12 to the property at 46 Arsenal Street. There are other conduits going into that property. They are full, and we do not have room to place our fiber in the conduit. So that's why we are requesting this petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that wish to be heard on this petition? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, yes, just regarding the public hearing, I just wanted to advise that I got an email from a resident on Melendi Avenue about questions about construction. I referred her to the DPW to answer her questions. And I'm assuming that that was satisfactorily taken care of.
Thank you, Councilor.
I will make a motion to approve the petition for Crown Castle Communications for the 486 Arsenal Street underground conduit.
Is there a second?
Second.
May be heard in the motion, Mr. President?
Councilor Gannon, yes.
Thank you. Not having heard of Crown Castle Communications before, just want some clarification from the town to clarify this is actually a public utility and not a private entity that doesn't have the ability to lay waste in public ways? Just maybe town engineer or someone else?
Matt, are you available for this?
Hello?
Yes, Matt.
Yeah, I believe that they are subject to getting a grant allocation for the utility, for serving underground communication.
Thank you, Mr. President, just want to be clarified.
No problem. Are there any other questions or comments? Attorney Rich?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that in the motion, I heard of a different reference. It should be motion specifically referencing Crown Castle. I thought I heard something different referenced in the motion.
I think you said Crown Castle.
Did he? Okay, it may have been my connection, but I thought I heard a different reference. Thank you.
I heard Comcast.
That's what I thought I heard.
There was definitely Crown Castle, so.
Yeah, that's in our, the motion we're voting on, calls for vote on behalf of Crown Castle Communication. So should that be switched to, I'm sorry, Mr. President, should I switch to Comcast?
No, it's Crown Castle.
I just want to make sure that the motion was properly stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Donato?
Yes, I was just, for clarification, is it 486 Arsenal Street or is it 486 Arsenal Way? Because it appears both ways in the document.
Mr. Conway?
Arsenal Way.
Thank you. I think we might have to amend the motion then.
I think so.
So I'll restate the motion to approve the petition for the underground conduit for Crown Castle Communication for 486 Arsenal Way.
And we do have a second on that? Any further comments?
Second, sorry.
It's okay. Please call the roll.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 7C, which is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company doing business as EverSource Energy to install approximately 15 plus or minus feet of conduit in Cypress Street, westerly from Pole 19413, thence turning southerly approximately 100 feet west of Dexter Avenue to replace the existing overhead electric service to 165 Dexter Avenue with an underground electric service. Okay, who's here from EverSource?
Good evening, Jackie Duffy, Councilor. How are you tonight?
Good, and yourself?
Good, thank you. Yes, we'd like to install 15 feet of conduit on Cypress Street, and it's to relocate the existing overhead electric service to be underground at 165 Dexter Avenue.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, can I get a motion from the council?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the petition for N-Star doing business as EverSource to install underground conduit for service to 165 Dexter Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, Councilor Woodland?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, it's not related to this petition, but the DPW has reached out to EverSource multiple times about moving wires on Swetts Court in the West End from one pole to the other. I just want to mention that while I have your ear, folks from EverSource, the street is S W E T T S Court in the West End. We've reached out numerous times to get the wires moved from one pole to the new pole. And we haven't got a sufficient response. So if you look into that, it will be something that I either plan on bringing up or putting up more recink about every single time you come back to this council. So I really appreciate you looking at that for us. Thank you.
Okay, could I have the spelling of that street again, please?
Absolutely, S W E T T S.
E T T S, okay, thank you.
Very welcome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilor Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Bays?
Yes.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Councilor Felton?
Yes.
Councilor Gannon?
Yes.
Councilor Canelis?
Yes.
Councilor Palumbo?
Yes.
Councilor Picciarelli? Councilor Picciarelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is...
Thank you, stay healthy, stay grateful.
Thank you. Item 8 is motions, orders, ordinances, orders, and resolutions. 8A is a first reading on a proposed loan order authorizing the town treasurer with the approval of the town manager to borrow and/or expend monies in the amount of $355,000 under Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 71, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, for the purpose to pay cost of purchasing a new ambulance for the fire department, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, unless any such premium applied, to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as you indicated, tonight is a first reading. There'll be a public hearing two weeks from tonight at the September 22 Town Council meeting. This will be advertised again for a public hearing in action. Just by way of background, very briefly, this was indicated in the fiscal year 2021 budget message dated June 9 that would be my intention to bring forward proposed loan orders for various capital equipment items contained in the fiscal year 2021 budget. A capital improvement program is indicated with forward correspondence tonight. This item is related to correspondence forward by Fire Chief Quinn regarding the need to move forward to replacement of the 2016 ambulance. Soon, given the ongoing expense of maintenance and the turnaround time from ordering and the delivery of a new ambulance, the dollar amount that the council president indicated is $355,000. There'll be two weeks from tonight, Mr. President, a full presentation. I'll provide opening remarks, and Chief Quinn will speak to the need of the replacement of the existing ambulance. Mr. President.
Thank you. There is a first reading, as the manager stated, and we'll be dealing with this at our next meeting. 8B is a resolution authorizing... Resolution authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $18,182 authorizing a transfer of funds in the amount of $18,182 from the fiscal year 2021 Town Council Reserve account to the fiscal year 2021 Transfer to Other Funds Account in order to fund the local match requirement for a federal fiscal year 2019 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very, very pleased to forward correspondence from Chief Quinn, along with Mr. Logan, the Acting Assistant Administrator for the Grants Program, Department of Homeland Security, regarding the town's approval of the town's application for funding under the federal fiscal year Assistance to Firefighter Grant, the, in the amount of $200,000. The chief, Chief Quinn will speak now, Mr. President, on the, the wife of what the proposed for radio replacement, and I'll speak forward, speak after Chief Quinn on the proposed transfer before you. So, Mr. President, Chief Robert Quinn, Fire Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Honorable Town Council. The department's 35 portable radios range in age from one year to 19 years old, with 83% being eight years old or greater. Due to the age of the portable radios, the manufacturer no longer supports them, meaning the portables are no longer repairable. The batteries are having recurring failures, the portables lack clarity, and that has resulted in more face-to-face communication incidents. The department lacks sufficient portables, and the portable radios are not P-25 compliant, which is the modern radio stuff, radio. The new portable radios will enhance the WFD.
I'm sorry, I really can't hear Chief Quinn. I don't know if it's my computer or if he has a volume he can up.
Okay, let me see. Got it up all the way. I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
The, I'll repeat what I said, the department's 35 portable radios range in age from one year to 19 years old, with 83% being eight years old or greater. Due to the age of the portable radios, the manufacturer no longer supports them, meaning the portables are no longer repairable, and the batteries are having recurring failures. The portables lack clarity. That has resulted in more face-to-face communication at incidents. The department lacks sufficient portables, and the portables are not P-25 compliant. The new portable radios will enhance the WFD's ability to perform its daily operations and increase its ability to protect life and property within its first two districts. The communication equipment will instill confidence, not only with the firefighters, but the community as well, that firefighters will be ready and prepared to handle emergencies when called upon. Communications is a critical component for a department to operate safely, effectively, and efficiently at incidents in each and every day. Accepting this grant will be highly beneficial for the operations of the Watertown Fire Department. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, as also stated within Chief Quinn's correspondence, the grant will also, replacement of these portable radios at the end of their lifespan will be certainly related to other items within the capital improvement program relating to the radio replacements that Chief Quinn spoke to. The proposed transfer before you this evening for the local match for the town, the dollar amount is $18,182. That would be from the fiscal year 2021 Town Council Reserve to the fiscal year 2021 Transfer to Other Funds. The dollar amount, again, is $18,182. And what's very, very pleasing in this $200,000 grant, the monies coming from the federal government will be $181,818. So the proposed transfer, Mr. President, before you and the Honorable Town Council is for $18,182, the local match for the grant, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the transfer?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the transfer of $18,182 for the firefighter radios.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just looking here, do we have a, an idea of, of the lifespan approximate on the radios?
Usually they're right about at the range we're at right now, you know, about eight years, nine years, depending on the, the way that the companies modernize and update their radios. The radios we have now, like I said, are out of our, are, like, they may be able to still service them, but parts, they don't want a manufacturer of the parts anymore. So it's anywhere in the range of eight to 10 years. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Bays?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, next item on the agenda is eight C, which is a resolution approving the acceptance of a gift of tangible personal property of six bike share stations and 38 bicycles from Metro Future, Inc. Mr. Manager, and then Mr. McGoon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Honorable Town Council are very pleased to forward you the correspondence from Mr. McGoon, Community Development Plan Director, Assistant Town Manager, along with Laura Weena, the Senior Transportation Planner, indicating that Metro Future Incorporated is donating bike share equipment to the town. As indicated in the correspondence, the donated equipment consists of six bike share stations and 38 bicycles totaling $224,257.60. This equipment, upon acceptance by the town, will be leased and operated by Lyft, which owns Motivate and Bluebike pursuant to the town's contract with Lyft for Bluebike stations included within the town. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, municipalities are authorized to accept gifts of tangible personal property with approval of Town Council. Prior to Town Council taking up their consideration of the resolution, like with your indulgence, some, Mr. President, members of the council will have Mr. McGoon kind of speak to the proposed gift of, if you will, of the tangible personal property in advance of council considering this. At this point, Mr. President, Mr. McGoon.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor President, members of council, just to give a little bit of background, the, because this is a little bit confusing, why we would be receiving a gift, but it's a program where we received a grant to help us bring Bluebikes as a regional bike share to Watertown, as well as a number of other communities in the Boston metropolitan region. That'll allow us to have a coordinated bike share system and allow interoperability within the region. In order to make that happen, again, it was somewhat convoluted, and, and I'm sure Attorney Rich might be able to jump in if need be, but the $100,000 contribution for Watertown that the contract speaks to is made up of $80,000 grant that we received, $20,000 that we contribute from the TNC funds. In order to make that work with MAPC and with the language that the attorneys from the various jurisdictions have worked out, MAPC will receive the equipment. They will then give that to us. We'll accept the grant or accept the gift, which we're doing tonight. We will then lease that to Motivate to operate the, the system. You know, the, the issue was with us not wanting to own the equipment that's being operated, and, and this is a way to get around that and make the system work and get Bluebikes here in the community and works out for everyone involved. So I'm not sure if that was crystal clear, but I'll be happy to answer any questions people have related to that.
Thank you. Wait, hold on, John. You have to put it on the floor first.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion on the resolution?
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the acceptance of a gift of tangible personal property of six bike share stations and 38 bicycles from Metro Future, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
John Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. McGoon. So it's, I guess my excitement of, of jumping to the gun here was related to my enthusiasm initiation of the Bluebike program in Watertown. So once we, I just want to get a sense of a timeline when the bikes will be fully operational for Watertown users and other folks who choose to use the system.
Well, fortunately, of all the communities that are part of this grant and have received approval, we were the first one to get some stations, and some are actually have been installed. There are still working on the agreements for the stations that would be installed on private property. So some of those have not been installed yet, but the ones on private property, we've already, already received and already in operation.
Okay, follow up, Mr. President. So the, will this be a year-round program or just limited to certain months of the year?
It, it would allow for Motivate to remove the bikes in the event of a severe winter storm, but otherwise they would be available year-round.
And one final, one final question. I've seen a number of bikes in other cities. Some have at least cited saying that helmet use is recommended well there, and may I suggest there should be signage to that effect on the Watertown Bluebike stations?
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, I'm sure that'll be part of the signage on the stations. It's consistent throughout the Bluebike system to encourage, as well as the app that you use to access the bike, which encourages helmet use.
And I'm not familiar with other Bluebike signage, but do other Bluebike signage members of this pact require helmet use or signage in that effect?
I, I don't think it's something that we require some municipality, but it's just consistent with the state law that, you know, anyone over a certain age has to wear a helmet when riding a bike. So the stations and the apps refer to that requirement.
Well, just, just to clarify, these are Watertown-owned bikes if the vote goes through. So I, as this one counselor would suggest, that they shall have such signs and not, maybe they'll put them in, but they shall put them in. Can I get that comment?
Sure, yeah.
No further questions, Mr. President?
Any other questions from Counselor Canelis and then Counselor Bays?
Thank you. So through you, Mr. President, to Mr. McGoon. So how many bike stations will there be in total?
So with this grant, there will be seven installed, three which will be on public property, then additional four that would be on private property.
So, because I know we had initially spoken about six stations?
Yeah, we've, we've added a seventh one through donation of a property owner, a private developer, and we'll continue to look for opportunities to do that as well.
So will the $100,000 be adequate to cover the, the startup?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. If I may continue, Mr. President? Follow-up, thank you. Will there be any other costs? I noticed that on page 13, there was, there were fees associated with station relocation. So if, in fact, the, the stations that are selected were not working out well, and we had to relocate, would there in fact be fees?
There could be fees associated with that. Again, through you, Mr. President. And what we've done is set aside a small portion of the TNC funds that we've provided for the funding of the Bluebikes to cover that if need be.
Thank you.
Counselor Bays?
Yeah, so I noticed that, that the, the company has purchased insurance, but we're actually technically going to own these bikes. I'm just wondering, does that insurance cover us? Do we have to buy our own insurance? I mean, when these people bought, are riding these bikes, we technically own the bikes. So how does that work?
I don't know. If Mr. Rich wants to address that question.
Yes, certainly.
Rich, could you help us with this?
Certainly, Mr. President. The agreement specifically makes Motivate the licensee or let's see, responsible for the equipment, and they, they, they carry insurance relative to that equipment. This, the agreement was, was heavily negotiated. I think there were, were some concerns about the, the process that this would be undertaken, that would be undertaken. The town will receive not only the insurance certificates, but if you look at Section 8 of the agreement, Motivate agrees to defend, indemnify, and hold harmless to the town. So we have specific indemnification. I think originally there may have been a, an attempt at mutual indemnification, but as you know, the, the town is not subject to the ability to indemnify. So this does indemnify the town by Motivate, which is Lyft, for any and all claims that would occur. So should the town be sued, Motivate would step in and defend the town.
And, and just one more question. So if bikes are lost or stolen, I noticed there was prices on the, the back of the, the last few pages. Are we going to have to purchase new bikes, or how does that work?
No, that'd be Motivate's responsibility.
The town has no obligation to replace the equipment.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Counselor Feltonner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions. One, I, you know, I saw the ones that were already installed. I was a little curious if the private ones went in first because I had the means to go ahead and pay for the insulation. And then two, just on communication, I was kind of assuming that Mr. McGoon's Department of Community Development Planning will be the contact for issues, although I know it says Motivate's going to have staff, but it also says, like, if there's interruption in service, they'll notify the town. I don't know if, if Steve wants to speak to that, or just any logistics or.
Sure, through you, Mr. President. To the first question, it's actually the other way around. The ones were installed on public property, the ones on private property, they're still negotiating with the private property owners' specifics of their contractual arrangement. So those have not been installed yet, but soon will be. I, I think, I'm confident that they'll work out that very shortly and have those installed. In terms of the second question, in terms of municipal contact, sure, that would be our department, you know, for the majority of those things. But I think it's important to note that Motivate is responsible for the operation of, of the system, and the vast majority of complaints or questions should be directed to Motivate for them to respond. Things like lost or stolen bicycles, or bicycles are inoperable, or station operation issues, or any rebalancing of bicycles. All those things will be addressed by Motivate.
Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion, please? Okay, but you wanted, we wanted to amend, to add Counselor Gannon's language about.
Okay, so, so the motion would then be amended to include that signage at the station shall indicate that riders need to wear helmets.
Second.
Can I get, okay, so we have a motion and a second, we have, on the amendment, can I get a roll call on the amendment, please?
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bays?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda? Yes. Now can I get a, a roll call on the motion as it's been amended?
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Bays?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Nine A is a committee on economic development and planning report regarding various transportation issues. Counselor Woodland?
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee convened on Tuesday, August 4, 2020, at 5:00 PM by Zoom in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions to deal meaning law, general law 30A, section 20, related to the 2020 COVID-19 emergency. President or myself, Chair Lisa Felton, Vice Chair, Vincent Picciarelli, Secretary, Staff President with Steve McGoon, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community Development and Planning, Gideon Schreiber, Senior Planner, Laura Weiner, Senior Transportation Planner, and Lawrence Field, Senior Housing Planner, also President or Counselors, John Gannon, Angeline Canelis, and Anthony Palumbo. The purpose of the meeting was updates on regional electric scooters, blue bikes, and the TMA slash Pleasant Street Shuttle, a review of the Wayfinding Grant and consideration and recommendation of transportation network company funds. One concerning regional electric scooters. Ms. Weiner provided an update since this was last discussed September 16, 2019, with the recommendation to come back to the committee after legislation is passed in order to decide how to best to proceed. There is new language in the transportation bond bill, but it has not been passed, so this is still on hold. Counselor Canelis went on record saying she will not support electric scooters citing issues that occurred in Brookline. Two, blue bikes. Ms. Weiner stated the program launched with installation in progress. We received a grant from MassDOT to cover most of the cost for six stations with additional contributions from the Courtyard Marriott and Arsenal Yards for a seventh station as part of their TDM lift, which owns Blue Bike, generally places stations along commercial corridors because business businesses generate more users than residential areas. They must be spaced no more than a quarter to a third of mile apart so that there are options. If a station is empty or full, blue bike stations will be in the following locations: Coolidge Square, Nichols Ave, Arsenal Street, near Arsenal Yards, Arsenal Street at Kingsbury Street, Arsenal Street between Gables and Elon, North Beacon Street at North Beacon Court, Watertown Square at the Bus Depot. The committee asked for a copy of the Blue Bike contract, which is attached to these minutes in attachment A, and the Boilsome Properties TDM agreement, which is attachment B. Issue three, the TMA slash Pleasant Street Shuttle. Ms. Weiner said that we received a grant from MassDOT for a pilot shuttle on Pleasant Street in February of 2020, and the RFP for operations went out July 20, which can be found in attachment C. The RFP is due September 9, and the committee agreed to meet after that for further discussion. At this point, there is still no interest from Newton or Waltham for participating. Issue four, the Wayfinding Grant. Ms. Weiner distributed a July 27 memo outlining progress on the grant activities, which can be found in attachment D. The advisory committee is planning on holding a public meeting in the fall. The grant funding is limited to public, public meetings for input, but the community development and planning staff can present the findings to the town council as well. The committee asked to review the findings before the presentation. Fifth issue, TNC or Transportation Network Company Funds. Ms. Weiner distributed a July 29 memo with staff recommendations on dispersment of TNC funds, which are $62,257 for 2019, which can be found in attachment E. As discussed at the last meeting on October 29, 2019, the committee recommended using 2018 TNC money to partially fund the blue bikes and the TMA plus G shuttle. The recommendation for 2019 is to continue funding those initiatives. Counselor Picciarelli made a motion, which should be read in just a second, on how that appropriation will occur. It was voted unanimously by roll call, three to zero, the meeting adjourned at 6:00 PM following a unanimous roll call, and the report was prepared by Counselor Picciarelli, and I thank him for doing so in a speedy manner.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report? No moved. Is there a second? Discussion on the report. Counselor Palumbo? Got to unmute. Got to unmute, Tony, please. There you go.
I apologize for the delay. I just, I, I mean, the minutes reflect what happened at the meeting, but I think we know now from the report from Mr. McGoon that the blue bikes was not a donation, was not a grant from DOT, was it? This is what it says in the minutes. We could, I don't know if we need to update the minutes to reflect the reality or just that the minutes reflected that reality at that time. So I just put that out there.
No, it is, it does represent a grant from Mass Department of Transportation. So I think that's correct. Mr. Rich may have want to elaborate on that.
Oh, yeah, I, through you, Mr. President, if I may. I I believe that is correct, but I also just want to point out that the 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 report reflects the understanding at that time. I know that there had been some changes with respect to the agreement and the process subsequent to that, but the report would reflect the understanding of the committee at the time, and so could not really be updated with respect to matters that occurred after the the committee meeting itself.
Thank you, Counselor President.
Thank you, Counselor Palumbo. Are there any other questions on the report itself? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Attorney Rich, can we take all of these as one motion, these action items, or should we do them separately?
Mr. President, given that they reference different calendar years and different items, and given the need to have a roll call vote, I would recommend that we take them individually.
Okay, thank you. Let's take the first one. Counselor Picciarelli, make a motion, please?
Mr. President, that we, the town council appropriate $8,000 in calendar year 2018 funds for the town of Watertown's annual 2020 TMA dues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The second item, please.
The, Mr. President, the town council appropriate $8,000 in calendar year 2019 funds for the town of Watertown's annual 2021 TMA dues.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes. The next item?
Mr. President, the town, I make a motion that the town council appropriates $20,000 in calendar year 2019 funds to pay for a portion of the seventh blue bike station and incidental costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Item number four.
Mr. President, that make motion that $5,488 in calendar year 2018 funds will remain unappropriated for any allowable future use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes. And the last item?
Mr. President, I make a motion that $35,257 in calendar year 2019 funds will remain unappropriated for any allowable future use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is nine B, which is a committee on state, federal, and regional government report regarding a reappointment to the Board of Election Commissioners. Counselor Canelis?
Thank you. The Committee on State, Federal, and Regional Government met on Wednesday, July 22 at 6:00 PM at Philopello Park at the Grove Street entrance at the gazebo on the green. Present were myself, Chair, Counselor Anthony Palumbo, Vice Chair, Counselor Lisa Felton, Secretary, and Christopher Dunn of 92 Riverside Street, the candidate. The agenda was to interview Christopher Dunn on his reappointment to the Board of Election Commissioners for a term to expire on April 1, 2024. Chair Canelis asked Mr. Dunn to share some of his experiences as an election commissioner, noting his service to date of seven years. He noted that there have been some malfunction issues with the new equipment and some changes of voter entrances at the Kuntz Elementary and Watertown Middle School created some accessibility issues, and along with rain impacts at the last governor's race, they didn't leave town hall until 4:40 AM. Many of the poll workers are seniors, and election day tends to be a long workday. Due to the pandemic, the commissioners are looking at how to handle cleaning issues as well as how people will be needed to cover voting machines, handout ballots, and check in voters. Dunn also noted there are regularly no-shows among poll workers. Although he recently retired, he decided he would enjoy another term of service on the commission, and although this will be the first time both Saturday and Sunday will be available for early voting in person, it is anticipated that under the current guidance, they will be able to count the ballots ahead of voting day. All ballots continue to be secured in boxes in unlocked rooms. Dunn is not sure if the more recent increase in pay has helped worker performance, but has it attract, but it has attracted more applicants. He thinks there should be more training for new workers as well as updates for folks who need to adjust to several changes. It now takes about seven seconds to process each ballot. The last few meetings were provided one-on-one training with new workers, and would also be a good idea to pay all staff for trainings as needed to ensure smoother operations and to prevent no-shows. Canelis shared that that voting day used to be more celebratory event, and residents were excited to see neighbors, new and old. Some ideas were suggested by attendees at the meeting, such as providing coffee and or baked goods upon display of an "I voted" sticker, to help bring back some camaraderie or incentivize workers or volunteers, townwide communications such as using reverse 911, along with more sandwich boards, early voting advertising, and help for elderly voters would also benefit election participation. Motion by Counselor Palumbo to recommend the town council approve the reappointment of Christopher Dunn to the Board of Election Commissioners to a term to expire on April 1, 2014, seconded by Counselor Felton, approved three to zero. 6:24 PM, motion to adjourn by Counselor Felton, seconded by Counselor Palumbo, approved three to zero. And thank you, Counselor Felton, for submitting the minutes for us.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Motion to accept the report.
Sorry, motion to accept the report.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the report? Roll call, please.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the reappointment of Christopher Dunn to the Board of Election Commissioners to a term to expire on April 1, 2024?
No moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Gannon?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is nine C, which is the Committees on Human Services and Rules and Ordinances Report Regarding the Proposed Noise Ordinance. Counselor Palumbo is the Chair of Human Services, and Counselor Donato is the Chair of Rules and Ordinances. Who's going to read the report?
I wouldn't mind if, I'd appreciate it if Counselor Donato would do it, since I was sort of stepped out for a proportion of that because of the disconnect.
Okay, Counselor Donato, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Joint Committee of Human Services and Rules and Ordinances met on August 11, 2020 at 6:15 PM. Meeting was conducted online via Zoom video conference, and you can see the agenda which is attached here to the tales. Present were counselors Anthony Palumbo, Chair of Human Services, myself, Chair of Rules and Ordinances, Counselor Caroline Baze, who is the Vice Chair of Human Services, Counselor Kenneth Woodland, who is Vice Chair of Rules and Ordinances, Counselor John Gannon, who is Secretary for Human Services, and Counselor Felton, who is the Secretary for Rules and Ordinances. Also present were Council President Mark Sedaris, Counselor Vincent Picciarelli, Department of Community Development and Planning Senior Planner, Gideon Schreiber, Watertown Police Department Captain Ray Dupuy, Recreation Department Director Peter Sotola. Members of the public on record included Gerald Carney, Lisa Cavaretta, Ann Cox, Annette Farrell, Stephen Kennedy, Joan Martin, Jessica Mills, and Alodia Thomas, and Jill Roars. Chair Palumbo called the meeting to order at 6:18 to discuss the most recent draft of the noise ordinance with amendments by legal counsel. Counselor Gannon was the public contact for the online meeting, noted that there were 10 panelists and eight attendees listed as connected. The previous draft of dated December 17 was forwarded by the Joint Committee for Review by the town attorney, and it was amended as of February 28, 2020. Counselors Palumbo and Donato focused on sources of noise pollution sections 95.03 v. 11. There were concerns that the wording would allow this type of noise from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I felt this was not the case and stated that the examples are not an exhaustive list, but it is included but not limited to those. Noise would be governed during daylight hours as specified in section 95.06, noise standards, that we could tweak some of the wording, which was based on some of those regulations. Changes could be suggested when the full council, full town council deliberates the ordinance when the town attorney is also present rather than making changes. Now, at 6:28 PM, Counselor Palumbo's connection was lost. He returned to the meeting at 6:33 PM. Section 95.04, Measurements of Noise, now includes reference in hyperlinks to state interpretations. Edits to section 95.07, Exceptions included to delete the word occasional from subsection C and rewording text in subsection G to cover First Amendment protections. Legal counsel also modified section 95.08, Duties and Responsibilities. Counsel Felton noted that amplified sound is included in the definitions, is not specifically referenced in the ordinance. She suggested including it in 95.07, Exceptions, Subparagraph. He suggested including it in 95.07, Exceptions, Subparagraph C. The Chair felt any additional changes should wait until the full Town Council deliberates the noise ordinance. The public comment period began at 6:46 PM. Mr. Santola stated that he wished we could change Section 95.06, paragraph E, noise standards, which reads, "No person or organization shall play amplified music in public parks without a permit from the appropriate town department." Mr. Santola asked for some clarity, specifically citing an example about a mom with her daughter playing frisbee in the park while using their cell phone at a low decibel, and would this be fair? And if the system with the noise ordinance is the delta and the rotary or Watertown Cemetery a public park? Mr. Santola stated he did not think it was practical or fair, and that people should be able to play some background music while, for example, playing tennis. He understands concerns about loud music at Victory, Casey, and Arsenal, and have stopped that, but he does not think that this part of the ordinance is realistic or enforceable or reasonable, and he would like some clarification as to whether this applies to people. Stephen Kennedy stated that he had sent an email to all the counselors, and his concerns in particular were related to Section 95.06, which refers to tonal noise, and 95.03a, which he believes still stands and reflects the state regulations. Mr. Kennedy suggested that we change the word "measure" because he stated you do not measure the noise standards, you violate the noise standard. The noise standards include both Sections 95.06 as well as 95.03a. Section 95.06 is about general noise level and total noise. 95.03a is about the state regulations. Counsel Palumba stated that the Town Attorney responded to Mr. Kennedy's concerns, and he forwarded the email, which is also an attachment to the minutes. At 6:55 PM, Counselor Cunellus joined the meeting. Resident Alodia Thomas asked that she would like to move on, and she wanted to understand what the next steps were. She was hoping that this could be discussed at the Town Council in the next month or so. Counselor Palumba responded that some of the committee members hope that President Sedaris might not put this on a full council agenda until we are able to meet again in person, given the amount of effort that has been given to updating noise regulations. Ms. Thomas responded that she understood that we would like to have a full public meeting, but she and many others have been working on this issue since 2013. She would like to see us move forward, but be in a better format than Zoom. She's concerned that any further delay will not help us improve the quality of life and also get proper signage and enforcement on people's concerns. Counselor Palumba responded that he was sure President Sedaris would take her concerns into consideration. Mr. Gerald Carney had questions about some of the changes, particularly because there have been musicians playing in the town parking lot behind CVS and using very loud amplifiers, and he stated that this would go on for six to seven hours a night, and he could hear the music even when his windows were closed. Mr. Carney stated he would think this would violate the current noise regulations, but he could not get proper enforcement. It is important to include duration of noise in the ordinance, but the current change is addressless, that you can't play in a park or parking lot without a town permit. He said he was not really concerned with something like an acoustic guitar that does not go on for hours. Counselors Woodland and Palumba responded yes, that they would need a town permit to play amplified music. It would also regulate duration. Counselor John Gannon shared that he personally received a couple of pertinent emails, and he will forward them, but he read aloud a message from Janice Tora. Counselor Woodland made a motion to recommend to the full Town Council to ratify the current draft noise ordinance as reviewed and amended by legal counsel. That was approved with a vote of 5 to 1, with Counsel Woodland voting in the negative. All other committee members voted yes. At 7:02 PM, there was a motion to adjourn by Counselor Woodland, seconded by Counselor Feltna, and we adjourned with a vote of 6 to 0. The report was respectfully submitted by Lisa Feltna, and also attached to the minutes were several exhibits, including the revised noise ordinance as well as emails that were referenced herein. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I get first the motion to accept the report?
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Baze.
Yes.
Counselor Donato.
Yes.
Counselor Feltna.
Yes.
Counselor Gannon.
Yes.
Counselor Cunellus.
Yes.
Counselor Palumba.
Yes.
Counselor Picciarelli.
Yes.
Counselor Woodland.
Yes.
President Sedaris.
Yes, thank you. Before we move on, I just want to state that, recognizing a couple of comments that were in the minutes, I do recognize that this is a very important issue that has been worked on, number one, for a long time, but by a number of different counselors and many members of the community. And it is extremely difficult to do a meeting like this in a Zoom format. As I stated earlier in this meeting, we're looking to see if we could change that a little bit, but that would still only limit the room to approximately 25 people under the state guidelines at this point. I will say if we have to do something like a maximum of 25 people in a portion of Zoom, we may do that, and I also will state that this is probably more than likely going to be a special meeting with this being the only item on the agenda. So I am sensitive, and I do understand that a lot of things have happened. Please be patient a little bit longer, because I would prefer to get this right whatever way, and I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak about it. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
So we're not going to go on the actual item?
Oh, there is, no.
No, okay.
No.
Yeah, no, because it's just...
Okay, there is no action item on this. So new business, any new business to come before the council? Counselor Palumba.
Yes, I just would like to make a referral. I would like to make a referral to the Committee on Media and Public Outreach for a follow-up review of the final report and recommendations from the Committee's December 19, 2019 meeting.
Counselor Palumba, what we will do is we will place that on the next agenda for referral, because this is not, under the current rules, we would put that on the new business for referral. So if Marilyn could make a note that we will put that on the new business at the next council meeting. Counselor Feltna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say I really appreciate your comments, and I like your idea of potentially having a special meeting on the noise ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'm just, I think it'd be appropriate to inquire about the charter review process that you've anticipated. Is that something you'd wait for a full meeting to be held, or can it be done?
I was going to wait till under the announcement section, Counselor Gannon.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I will address that. Any other new business? Communications from the Town Manager, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Town Council. I'd like to talk a few items tonight. The first three of them are related to recent news flashes in items that were put on the website. The first one I want to talk about is to let folks know that may not have seen the news flashes, that the first one I want to talk about is emergency rental assistance available for income-qualified Watertown renters. The Watertown Housing Partnership has set up the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for Watertown renters who have lost income and are having trouble paying their rent as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. This assistance is temporary and will provide assistance for up to three months to Watertown renters not receiving other governmental rental assistance and earning below 80% of the area median income. Anyone interested in applying should contact, and this again is on the town's website. Anyone's interested in applying, the deadline is Thursday, September 24. The contact is Ms. Robin Ruffo at Metro West Collaborative directly. She can be reached by email, which would be robin@metrowestcd.org, or a phone number, which is 617-923-3505, extension 5. The second item, which was a news flash as well, we forward to Town Council, is Watertown is offering microenterprised business grants. Applications are now being accepted for microenterprised businesses, grants to be utilized to address emergency needs of up to $10,000 for microenterprised businesses. That's a commercial enterprise that has five or fewer employees. And then that last news flash I wanted to talk about is Watertown Bean on Plastic Bag has been restored. As you recall, the Watertown Single Use Plastic Bean Ordinance is now back in effect in order to give business owners time to make the transition away from plastic bags. Enforcement will not begin until October 1st. We encourage businesses to make the transition as soon as possible. Please take note that after October 1, no single-use plastic checkout bags may be distributed at the point of sale for any businesses. And then the last item I wanted to talk about was the September 1 state primary held a week ago tonight. The first item I wanted to speak to is correspondence that we forward to council tonight was statistics that Mr. Flynn, the chief election officer and town clerk, had provided this afternoon, and I'd like to kind of speak to the general public to kind of speak to an overall statistics of what makes up the voting for last Tuesday at the state primary. As Mr. Flynn had indicated, please be advised that 11,160 voters cast their ballots in last week's state primary. That makeup is as follows. There were early voting ballots that were mailed out, and 7,620 were returned and counted. Same thing with absentee ballots were mailed out, and 250 absentee ballots were counted. The remaining of 11,160 was 3,290 voters cast, and that was related to the in-person early voting during the period of time, August 22 to August 28, as well as the in-person voting at the 12 precincts at the, a week ago today, at the September 1 election, which ran from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So that's the statistics behind the voting, if you will, Mr. President, members of the council, but kind of like to follow up on the remarks by Town Council President Sedaris under the president's report, that I'd like to personally acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Flynn, his staff, all of the poll workers, the Board of Election Commissioners, along with many other individuals who provided additional assistance on Election Day to make sure that all the ballots were counted. Of that being said, Mr. President, members of the council, we will need to have even more additional assistance onboard for the November 3 presidential election. Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is requests for information. Any requests for information? Counselor Palumba.
Thank you. I have two requests, if I might. The first is regarding the fiscal 2021 budget. The fiscal 2021 town budget that the Town Council passed in June of this year included a reduction in local aid from the 2020 fiscal year budget of $2,646,12, given the uncertainty of the state revenue due to COVID-19. Recently, the governor and the legislature announced that there will be no reduction in state aid and that those cities and towns could anticipate the same amount of aid as in fiscal 2020. I request that the Town Manager provide information of how this additional aid will be allocated in fiscal 2021. Specifically, I ask whether the Town Council's number-one priority in its budget guidelines for fiscal 2021, which is the hiring of an assistant Town Manager whose responsibilities would include communication and community engagement, will be funded. In addition, I ask whether the following positions requested by Town Departments, but not included in the fiscal year 2021 budget, will be funded, including the Town Planner in the Department of Public Community Development and Planning, Recycling Solid Waste Coordinator in the Department of Public Works, Public Works Construction Inspector in the Department of Public Works, and the Community Outreach Librarian. The second request, the position of... The department has recently lost the services of Jesse Myatt, the Director of Administration and Financing in the Department of Public Health, who was in effect serving as the superintendent of the department. The department is without an active superintendent. Given that the department provides essential services to the town, I request the following information. What steps, in addition to placing an advertisement for the open position of Director of Administration and Financing, have been taken or will be taken to fill this position? Who is at, who at the Department of Public Health is overseeing the hiring of this position? What steps have been taken to hire a temporary employee, a former superintendent of Public Works, for example, until it is determined that the responsibilities of the job will again be undertaken by the present superintendent? Those are my two requests for information, and I will forward those to Marilyn.
Thank you. Counselor Cunellus.
Thank you. Just an in-house housekeeping item. I would request that the administration through the IT department supply us with a tutorial as to how to actually view the agenda and the accompanying material while participating in Zoom. Is it a shared screen? Is it a split screen? There's nobody in the next cubicle to tell me how it works. So I think the residents at home should also be able to view the material as they were able to while we were participating in the Town Council chambers, and everything was visible on the monitors, and residents at home were able to view it. So I'd like to have some information specific to the technical issues. Thank you.
Counselor Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. My request relates to the upcoming general election on November 3. And first, like the Town Manager and Town Council President, I wanted to acknowledge the hard work of the Clerk's Office, particularly John Flynn, and all the folks who worked, the Election Commission, and all the folks who worked the polls on Election Day and the early hour, early voting. And I noticed a lot of creative staffing, such as folks from Town Hall who had been working at Town Hall being redeployed on Election Day. So every measure of success worked out well. The Watertown, unlike our neighbors Cambridge and Newton, was able to count all of the ballots on Election Night. We've heard some of the problems at other towns that did not. And to that end, my request for information would be to get a report from the Town Manager about staffing for the next election. I personally visited every polling place on Election Day and noted that we did well with the manpower, the personnel we had, but there are going to be a lot more ballots than the overwhelming number of 11,160 that did vote on Election Day. So I'd like a report on measures to obtain additional staffing, as well as if there's appropriate funding needed, I would be happy to support that, whatever is needed to make that happen. And also, a question for the Town Attorney, if appropriate, question whether the state law allows the town to tabulate and count absentee mail-in ballots before the election, because that seemed to be a personnel issue with redeploying a number of people to catch up on the backlog as each absentee's and mail-ins were tabulated and officially counted. So I think we could use, that objective would be one element, but it looks like we're going to need additional personnel, and I'd be happy to support funding for that, but I just want to see a plan in place in time for our next election. And the last issue with regard to the election. I was informed that there is a new election-specific ballot box going to be installed by the Town Clerk's Office, and I wanted to know if that's the only ballot box, box that we can expect? Will there be others? And if there's only a choice made to acquire one ballot box, what was the reasoning involved? Some folks are talking about... Some folks are talking about, I hope that ballot boxes could be placed in different locations in Watertown. I'd just like an update on that one, so I appreciate, again, all the efforts of town personnel and volunteers, even people who were creatively hired and redeployed. It made for a wonderful outcome, and I'm sure Watertown will do no less on the general election. Thank you.
Any other requests for information? Seeing none announcements? Any announcements? Councilor Palumbo?
Thank you. I'm really happy to have an opportunity to make this announcement, and I hope that people can attend. Our task force here, this task force on Substance Use Disorder, has been working for the last months to pull together a Zoom presentation for this coming Sunday, the 13th. And the title of it is "Erase the Stigma of Substance Use Disorder: Recovery is Possible." And it'll take place on Sunday, September 13, this coming Sunday, from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. It'll be via Zoom. We have as our guest speaker Dr. John Kelly from MGH, the Director of Research Recovery of the Research Recovery Institute. And the moderator will be Watertown resident and the Director of MGH's Substance Use Disorder, Bridge Clinic Dr. Laura Kehoe. This is, again, like I said, this is something that people have been working on quite a bit. It's also a recognition that during the pandemic, issues affecting recovery have been affected, like so many other things have been affected. And this is a great opportunity for people to address the issue of the stigma, which makes it often difficult for people to agree to have services or to reach out for services because of the stigma of substance use disorder. You can register at watertown-cares.com. That's watertown-cares.com to register. Then you'll be sent an email with the Zoom link. And then on the day of the event, if for some reason you weren't able to register prior, you will be able to go to watertown-cares.com on Sunday, the 13th, and be immediately put into the webinar. So I hope that folks can attend that. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilor Feltna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to let people know about several community meetings and development that are scheduled or being scheduled. The first is for this Thursday at 6:30 for 48 North Beacon Street here in Watertown Square, looking for a new marijuana facility by Sierra Naturals. And the proposal involves some new construction. So 6:30 Thursday. The next Zoom community meeting is Tuesday, September 15, 7:00 PM, and that is with Crescent and WS Development for 202 Arsenal Street, the parcel that was originally going to be a grocery. They are coming forward with a major change in use for life sciences office commercial space. So hopefully residents will zoom in for that on the 15th at 7:00. And then just a heads up, because I know the calendar is very full, on October 1 and October 8, they're both Thursday nights. Right now, they're thinking 6:30 for Galen Street in Watertown Square. A brand-new development, again, life sciences and commercial space on Galen Street. 6:30, and that's with Boston Development Group and Elkus Manfredi Architects. So I hope everyone is staying healthy and hope to see you on Zoom. Thank you.
Before I recognize Council Palumbo, is there anyone else that has any announcements? Councilor Palumbo?
Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to extend my appreciation to Larry Fields, our new planner in the Department of Community Development and Planning, who has a focus on housing, affordable housing, and to all the members of the Watertown Housing Partnership for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. You know, it's a great program, and they put a lot of energy and effort in getting it up and running. And I hope that all of us, not only, as Town Manager just mentioned, it's on the website, but if we all could also possibly use our own connections, email lists, I mean, to spread the word, it'd be really helpful. This is time-limited in terms of getting the first round of applications in. I think there may be opportunities for other applications, but the deadline is in the end of this September. So just wanted to extend our thanks to our new planner and to the members of the partnership.
Thank you. I have two announcements. One is related to Watertown is offering microenterprise business grants. And there's a grant opportunity, applications are now being accepted for microenterprise business grants to be utilized to address emergency needs of up to $10,000 for microenterprise businesses, a commercial enterprise that has five or fewer employees. And if you go to the town's website, it's massgcc.submittable.com/submit and connect directly to the online application. The application process is open until 5:00 PM on September 25. And businesses that are interested in applying must apply online and fill out the application. And then the last item I have pertaining to the charter, as I just stated with the noise ordinance, an important issue like the charter, I've had serious concerns about all of the Zoom meetings we've had and had serious concerns about starting the charter process during the pandemic. At this point, I began reaching out to people that I was going to be appointed to see if they're interested. I will hopefully wrap that up in the next few days, and we will have to somehow do, I'm going to call it a hybrid model of allowing a certain number of people in a room that's large enough to do socialist distancing and other members to be available by Zoom, because we don't have a facility and we don't have the capability of hosting more than 25 people. So we are leaning towards moving this either towards the last week of this month or the first week of October. So stay tuned. Any other announcements? Councilor Gannon?
Is it appropriate to ask a question on your announcement about the charter review process?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I did read the charter, and it does note that a vote of the town council would be needed to extend the review period into 2021.
Correct.
Would that be your intention, to continue this until it's logically completed?
I would intend to see how we go along once we get started, and that would come either in a November or December date.
Okay, good. I just didn't want to shortstop the process.
No, no, we do need to begin the process, and I would never put a time limit on it. But if it gets to the point, I do recognize the fact that we can do that, and we would need a vote of the council to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your question. Any other announcements? Public forum? Any member of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, Councilor Picciarelli, do you have any emails from anyone for public forum?
No emails from the public.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? No moves. Is there a second?
I can't.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Donato?
Yes.
Council Feltna?
Yes.
Council Gannon?
Yes.
Council Canelus?
Yes.
Council Palumbo?
Yes.
Council Picciarelli?
Yes.
Council Woodland?
Yes.
Councilor Baze?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, thank you all. Stay safe and have a good evening.
Good night.
Good night.